Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the South Miami City Commission. Today is Tuesday, August 19th. The time is 7:00 PM. We'll now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Mayor Fernandez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Corey.
Present.
Commissioner Bonich.
Here.
Commissioner Kaye.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If we could please stand for a brief moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Bonich.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, we have no presentations this evening?
No.
Any add-on items?
No.
Okay, great. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 29th, 2025, and August 5th, 2025?
I'll move the motion, Mayor.
Second.
If a motion by Commissioner Kaye is second by Vice Mayor Corey. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Bonich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaye.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Corey.
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez.
Yes.
Minutes passed, 40.
Colleagues, I'd like to defer our discussion on item M3. I had attempted to contact the owner of the property. I just want to make sure he's aware of the item before we discuss it, if that's okay? So without any objection, I'd like to defer that to our meeting of September 3rd.
Which one's that, Mayor? Hold on.
That is the discussion on fire access at Dante Facel. Okay? So with that, a motion to defer to September 3rd without objection, we'll consider that moved and approved. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, any other items we would like to defer or withdraw? Okay, so we'll consider tonight's agenda set. Mr. City Manager, then, if we can start with your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Manager will present.
Madam Deputy, good evening.
Good evening. Just some dates to remember. Tonight, we have the first community workshop for the Parks and Rec 10-Year Master Plan that's taking place right here in Commission Chambers. That's on August 26th at 6:30 PM. A reminder that City Hall is going to be closed Monday, September 1st, in observance of Labor Day. So that week, if your trash pickup is on a Monday, if your garbage pickup is on a Monday, it's going to be picked up on Tuesday, and Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday. And our next commission meeting is on an off day to coincide with the first budget hearing, which will begin at 5:01 PM on September 3rd. Finally, registration is open for our third community cleanup. That's happening Saturday, September 30th, from 9:00 to 11:30 AM. We have volunteer hours available for that event, so please go ahead and go on our website and register for that. That's the end of the manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Colleagues, any questions? Okay. Seeing none, thank you again for the report. Mr. City Attorney, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing was just, which I emailed you all about, the hearing on Thursday on the motion to dismiss in the 287G litigation. That's the only thing I wanted to report on.
Colleagues, any questions? I have one request. If we can follow up, we've had some issues recently again with a contractor on our Septic Sewer Project. The manager's aware, and I'd like to understand if there's a way we can formally move to the bar of the contractor from doing business here, at least for a term of years? Okay?
Your mic.
We have been in pretty constant contact with Mr. Munoz on that, but we'll look into that specific request.
Great. If I can get just an update, and if I need to sponsor an item to bring that forward, I'm happy to do that.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. We'll now up the floor to public remarks. If there's anyone who, I don't have a list, John, or you can grab it for me? If there's anyone who'd like to address this commission in public remarks, now is the time, please come to the podium. You're second. Why don't you lead us off while I wait for the list, Mr. Ward? Good evening again.
I've been told that Commissioner Rodriguez is watching on TV, so I'm glad to bring this to him today. I've managed 11 campaigns in the city of South Miami and won nine. And the Saturday after the election, I get the candidate, myself and two friends, and we go out and take down all of the political signs. We usually miss one or two, but we go back and get them. It is, uh... South Miami residents tolerate these things because it's election time. But most of the time, if you leave one up, they get you. I don't know why. This is a record setter, and I hope that, I'll leave it here for Commissioner Rodriguez, because no one will ever break this record. It was up 11 months. Now, I reminded him twice privately and once publicly, but he says he's just a neighbor that cares.
Was this at your home, sir?
Pardon?
I didn't see it at your home. I didn't see that sign at your home.
It wasn't in my home.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure.
I told him it was on the corner of 59th and 76th, and it didn't make any difference. So, Commissioner, I'm gonna lay this over against your seat, and I hope that you will put it up in your garage and cherish it for a long time, because it will never be beaten. It'll be a historic sign forever. Now, before I put...
Mr. Ward, I think you should autograph it and put the date on it, just so we can memorial his date was taken down.
Before I put it up there and sit down, I had a call, I've been in the Keys for a while, that something's going on about Fuchs Park, and I checked around, and they said there's discussion of, of, uh... buildings or something going up on Fuchs Park. And all I can say is this, with all of the development that's going around town, a lot of people are saying developers own the city. Well, if you allow something to go like a building of a condo, I hope you won't in Fuchs Park, because Fuchs Park has, you all have improved Fuchs Park to the point that it's as nice as Dante Facel now. And there are a lot of people that make use of that path around the lake, the pond. It is really a very nice park. And I use it as often as I can to try to get rid of that thing. But I see people there all the time. And the fountain is outstanding. And all I can say is that I hope that all of the fine work that you all had put into Fuchs Park in the past year will not be destroyed. I don't think you should do anything to that park other than leave it like it is. Pickleball can wait somewhere else. In fact, I think there are a couple of pickleballs around South Miami. I don't know. I'm not a pickleball fan. I don't even know what it is. But anyway, Mr. Rodriguez, I always had people that managed their campaigns to keep their signs if they thought they had run for reelection, because it'll save them a couple of thousand dollars. But Commissioner, I'm gonna give you this record-setting sign and hope you'll cherish it for always.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Next on the list is Carolyn Nichols. You're recognized, followed by Jason Lopez. Again, those are all the names I have on the list. If anyone else would like to speak in public remarks, just please come forward and check in with John if you can. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carolyn Nichols. I've lived here since 1975. And I've seen a lot of buildings going up, and that park is a little gem. And I agree with this nice gentleman here about the park. I'm very emotional about this. We don't need to have more trees taken down. To me, a park is where you can relax and look at nature, what's left of it, and the wildlife, and the beautiful trees, and that lovely pond, and the children that have that little park that I see. My friend lives right near there, and I drive by there all the time. And I see the children enjoying that park. And it's something that the whole neighborhood can enjoy with their children and their families. I see people pull over and have their lunches there. And I just, please, and begging you, don't take those trees down and put concrete paddle balls. And I know that it's supposed to be a private company that's gonna be doing that and charging to have people play there, and we don't need that. We really do not need that. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, you're recognized. Good evening.
Good evening. Jason Lopez, 7730 65th Place. I am here to encourage you to not only save our parks, but to invest in more parks and better parks, and anything park and green space you can for the future of our city. I don't remember how many units it is, but with the 4,500-plus units going into the city of South Miami that previous administrations agreed to, I think that it's really important that you save our space while you still can. I know it kind of glaze over. It's kind of old news. But I've been told that there's this tone that our neighborhood has of NIMBYism, and I kind of resent that concept, because it is my backyard that I'm asking you to help protect. And it seems out of place to think that residents should be discounted because we're concerned about what's going on in our backyard. And so I am here to encourage you to protect Fuchs Park. I can't believe anything could happen to Fuchs Park. But to make an investment in the future of South Miami. We are losing space day by day, and as each development goes up, the flooding gets worse, the traffic gets worse. And the only people benefiting from it are the corporate landowners that are then renting the spaces back out to people. This isn't about residents of South Miami lives improving. This is about a select few developers and investors making money off of our backyards. So please, protect our neighborhoods. Don't let the investors take it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, that's all the names I have in public remarks. Is there anyone else? Mr. McCants, would you like to come up, please, as well? Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. James McCants. 6272 Southwest 59th Place. I want to talk about this program and the grant that we have gotten from our county commissioner. Commissioner Regalotto has given a program that I'm a part of, Rebuilding Together Miami Dade. It's part of a national initiative. They do this in over 100 locations all over the nation. It's a very good organization. We have money to repair homes, free of charge. It's coming from the county. We can put on some roofs. We can make renovations. We can provide handicap accessibility and other things. So we're gonna have a workshop for questions and answers tomorrow at our community meeting in, at the Senior Citizens Building. And that's gonna be 6701 Southwest 62th Avenue, and that's gonna be at the bottom. Okay? So I have a few flyers here, and if need be, I can ask our city clerk, would you offer permission to print out some more? Okay? I'm gonna put them at the back, on the back.
Mr. McCants, before you go, what kind of improvements can you use the money to do to your home?
We can put on roofs. We can straighten up floors. We can possibly do windows. We certainly can provide handicap accessibility. We can widen doors for wheelchairs. We can definitely paint the home, do landscaping, and provide aesthetic improvement. We can do certain things inside the home based on individual assessments. This is, really, this is the best organization I've been a part of. And I resigned from Habitat for Humanity to be a part of this, because we used to just do elderly handicapped and veterans. Now we stretched out to low-income, whoever qualifies. And you can't make more than 80% of the AMI for the county. And that gives a large range for the working class. Okay?
Any questions? No question. You're recognized, sir.
So, James, can you tell the public what are the criterias to getting it besides the lower than 80% AMI?
Okay, you must own and reside in your single-family home.
Must be in the district?
Yeah, in District 7. Now, not city, and this is important. This is county-district, so that means anybody that lives outside of the city and within District 7 for the county. For you. And in the county, you can apply for this. Make sure that you live within the county district and see if you can comply. All right, some of the things that must be done is that your property taxes must be current. And if your home is located in a designated flood zone, the insurance is required, and it must be maintained. This is just protecting our investment. And again, household income must be on or below 80%. And then the last thing, it must be in the district. Now, each home is assessed individually. And we come up with what you call a wish list with the homeowners. And then we go forth with what we can and cannot do. Okay? Any questions? I'm gonna be available for a little while.
James, that's the last question you have?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure, because you said not South Miami, but it's anybody in District 7?
Anybody, yeah, South Miami and anybody within, yeah, yeah. Because it used to be, when we have grants with the city, with the CRA, it used to be within a certain district. And everybody said, you know, that lives right outside of the city, they used to always complain about this and that. But now the opportunity is available for people that lives in the county portion of South Miami to, you know, get some help also.
There's a question for our staff. Is it any possible way that we can go ahead and market it, Brandon? Have the, and just post it on our news, everything that we can? Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Make sure you give them...
And the applications will be available tomorrow at the meeting also.
James, give them a digital, send them an email with the digital.
James, before you go, I think we have another question for you. I think Commissioner, you're recognized.
Thank you. What is the pool of money that you are working with? How much money do you have to disperse to District 7? Do you know?
Well, right off that, I'm not gonna say that out loud. All right, I'm gonna safely say that we have enough to get more than 12 to 15 homes. Okay? And that's a safe estimate. You know, most time when we put on a roof, a roof can cost anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000, $25,000. So you can do your math on that. Okay?
Thank you, James. Appreciate you making us aware of this.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Jacobs, you're recognized. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say I'm glad to see, and I haven't heard anything about it, but about putting our police under federal control, that you've made a lawsuit. Is it anywhere in the courts?
Yes, we have a hearing, actually, the City Attorney reported on it this Thursday, the 21st, on the state's motion to dismiss our claim. So hopefully, we'll get a favorable ruling.
Good. It was good to do whether what happens, because that's a, the emergency action is not true. There's no such thing. The other long questionnaire on parks, I'm glad you're getting people to think about the parks and to see what the city offers. And what I'd like to talk about is Marshall Williamson, and you're gonna vote on that parcel today? That was on the agenda.
So we're voting on the Mango Lots, not the actual Marshall Williamson Park. Those are the...
This is the Mango Lot, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same parcel. Okay, yes, we are. It's a discussion item laid on the agenda, sir.
Okay, so Marshall Williams owned that land, and he owned many acres around there, seven city blocks at least. He started farming during Jim Crow, when blacks were allowed to cross the railroad tracks. Imagine being black in the Old South from the times after the Civil War. Blacks were kept in place legally and illegally, using terrorism and murder. Marshall kept down, came down from Georgia and helped establish a close-knit black community that had economic viability. He owned close to seven city blocks with no access to banks. What he did was trade his work crew, him and his work crew would go and build things for wealthy people in the Keys or up and down the coast, and trade it for land. He owned close to seven city blocks, and I knew two men who live here in town now who worked for him as teens in the early 50s. It was just what you did if you were black. You worked for him, something to do. There was no other labor for black people. Since he's passed on most of his land, he's owned by the county. Probably from, he lost it from taxes. His land now serves the people of the county. We're making lots of money from it. He created a family-safe atmosphere for the black community during dangerous times. That's an exceptional story, and I would like you to think about his, the park that's named after him is nice and great, but it's behind the Jorge Perez mansions, those big giant towers. And they're not visible to anybody in the community. The park is not visible. I mean, you look across the street and you see a park, that's great, but if you look across the street and see a parking lot or more homes, or whatever, multiple, multifamily home put in, it's not gonna be very peaceful, happy, release your stress. And I know you did a survey of the communities that you were going to, and I wonder if the results are gonna be public.
They'll be shared this evening, sir.
Okay, so... I hope you can think about that when you vote.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the comments. Anyone else in public remarks? I've got no one else registered.
And if anyone on Zoom, please raise your virtual hand if you'd like to speak during public remarks.
Okay, seeing no one else in the chamber and no one else online, we'll close public remarks for now. Colleagues, let's move on with tonight's agenda. Without objection, if the clerk can read the committee appointment to the Charter Review Committee. Madam Clerk, item one.
Clifford R. Freeman has been appointed by Commissioner Kaye to the Charter Review Committee as per City Charter, Article II, Section 8A.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaye, and to the rest of us, we all need to make our appointments if we can as soon as possible. Thank you for that, Commissioner, again. Madam Clerk, if you can reconsider agenda items one, two, and three, please.
Yes. Item one, a resolution of the Marion City Commission of the City of South Miami Florida authorizing the city manager to renew health insurance coverage with cure-to-insurance company for eligible employees and participating retirees for fiscal year '25, '26 in an approximate premium amount of $1,254,027. Item two, a resolution of the Marion City Commission of the City of South Miami Florida authorizing the city manager to renew life accident, death, and disimpairment and long-term disability insurance with mutual of Omaha for eligible employees for fiscal year '25, '26 in an approximate premium amount of $56,154. Item three, a resolution of the Marion City Commission of the City of South Miami Florida resetting their first regular city commission meeting in September 2025 to Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions, any items? Commissioner Kaye?
Thank you, ma'am. I just had a couple of quick questions and understanding of where we were and where we're trying to go with this. I see that...
Which item, sir?
I'm sorry, one.
One, okay, so let's pull item one for discussion. Can I get a motion on items two and three?
I'll move the motion.
We have a motion to adopt by Commissioner Kaye.
I'll second.
And it's second by Commissioner Bonich. Madam Clerk, if you can read the roll on item two, please, and three.
Item three, okay. Commissioner Kaye?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Those two items.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaye, you're recognized for your questions on item one, please.
Thanks. Just two quick questions. I know before we had a flat fee on what we were doing with, as a form of payment for the services that provided for our insurance. We've since, I believe, switched that. Is that correct? Is it now based on commission? And what's the percentage on it right now? 6%?
Excuse me, so we can have it in the records. If you could please get up and introduce yourself, your address as well. We appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Calzadion with USI Insurance Services, 7737 Southwest 118 Place.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner, you're recognized. If you could just redirect the question, we'll hear her answer.
So my question was, we switched from a flat fee of approximately $25,000 the year before. Now we switched over to a commission fee, and you said it's 6%?
It's 6%.
So we roughly paid $70,000, $75,000 in commission fees with this particular basis, or how does that work?
It's about 60. Originally, you were paying, the city was paying a flat fee, but there were also commissions for other products that were added on, and we just took that amount and converted it when we took over the, you know, the brokerage record.
Just a question to the manager. Did we, I mean, how do we procure the services this time? So we can just clarify that.
Let our deputy manager kind of provide some additional insights on that?
Thank you.
Our prior HR manager met with several brokers after we transferred from the prior one, which was ANA Insurance.
Okay, but did we go through a formal procurement for this? And are we on a multi-year contract with the broker?
When we transferred, no, and we're not on a multi-year contract.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, thank you.
So you were stating that there was more commissions paid previously, even though we paid a flat fee, there were more commissions paid out?
It wasn't more, it was the same. We just converted from flat to percentage.
So the flat fee that we paid was $25,000, if I remember correctly?
That I don't have with me, but...
Madam Deputy, can you confirm what we paid in the aggregate between the flat fee and any commissions on products procured through that broker? That's your question, correct, Commissioner?
We were receiving, we were paying as a city a flat fee to our prior broker, and they were receiving commissions on ancillary services that were being offered directly from the carriers.
Correct.
Right now, they're receiving a commission from the carriers.
Correct, so I think what the commissioner is asking is, are we in the same worst, better economic position than we were before? I don't want to translate your words, but that's what I'm understanding.
I think that's what...
I think his measure is, what's the total amount that the broker's being compensated for procuring these services for us? Am I correct?
The difference is that previously, we had a line item in our contractual services where the city was paying the broker directly, and now the broker's getting their fees.
Understood, but I think at the end of the day, it comes, it's probably, it becomes part of our premium base? You know, is how I would rephrase it. So I think just from an informational perspective, what is the total, do we know the total amount? If we don't know, it's a, we don't know it, we'll look into it, we'll get back to it. That's fine.
I would have to go and see exactly what they were getting for all the ancillary services our prior broker.
So we can table this item for a few minutes, we can get the commissioner's questions, and we'll revisit this and hopefully vote it up. Okay? Thank you. So we'll table item one for now until we get that information. While we're waiting, if we can read item four, which is the second reading ordinance?
Go ahead.
Please.
Item four, in ordinance of the Marion City Commission of the City of South Miami Florida amending Article III Zoning Regulations, Section 20-3.6 Supplemental Regulations of the Land Development Code relating to accessory storage of recreational vehicles in single-family residential properties.
Thank you. Is there a staff presentation on this item, Mr. Manager?
This is for ordinance, yeah. Ordnance. Yeah, it's an ordinance. So, Mayor, I just wanted to draw your attention to what changed. You all heard this on first reading. What we eliminated based on your input was any possibility for a guest to bring an RV onto property. So it's all tied now to the current property owner, so what you saw before, it's the same situation, only it is limited to an RV owned by the current property owner.
And we've required registration, correct?
And we absolutely require registration, yeah.
Colleagues, any questions about the changes in the draft ordinance? Seeing none. This is a public hearing item, so we'll open up the floor for public hearing. This is an ordinance amending the city code to provide for rules regarding the storage of recreational vehicles on private property. If there's any member of the public who'd like to address this commission on this item, please come forward at this time. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online?
Anyone on Zoom, please raise your virtual hand if you'd like to speak on item four.
Seeing no raised hands online and no one coming forward in the chamber, we will close the public hearing. Colleagues, any final comments or questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt item four? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt item 4?
I move the item.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Corey and a second by Commissioner Bonich. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaya? Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item pass is 31.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you can read item 5, please.
Item 5, in ordinance of the Marion City Commission of the City of South Miami, Florida, amending Article 2 Departments of Chapter 2 Administration and City Government of the City Code to, to provide for the establishment of the city departments annually in adopted budget ordinance, together with establishment of duties and functions of each city department, to clarify that charter officers and their staff are not departments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Manager, City Attorney, brief overview on this item?
Same, same as what you saw in first reading.
For the benefit of the public that's here-
Of course.
Explain what the item does very briefly, any changes? Thank you.
So this is cleaning up some, some discrepancies in our code between how we, how we are set up, our different departments, and what the code says. This was kind of outdated information. It came up when we were looking at the charter and looking at the, the combination of the charter with, with these, these provisions. So what we're doing is deleting a, a lot of this and setting forth all of the departments in our budget as we do every year. We have all the different departments listed, so that's the most efficient way to, to do this. So we're trying to streamline the process.
Thank you for the summary. Colleagues, any questions of the manager or city attorney? Seeing none. Again, this is a public hearing item, so any member of the public is invited to come forward at this time and address this commission on item 5, which is an ordinance to establish city departments annually in conjunction with the adopted budget ordinance. Again, any member of the public is invited to come forward. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online?
Anyone online, please raise your virtual hand.
Okay. Seeing no one in the chamber and no one online, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion on item 5?
I'll move it.
Second? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bonich and a second by Vice Mayor Corey. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, if you can call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaya?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item pass is 40.
Thank you. While we're waiting on CA 1, let's go ahead and start the presentations. Since we do have members of the public here on this item, can we take up the mango lots item first, Mr. Manager?
Mayor, this item is before you at the request of the commission, who instructed the administration to host three community meetings. After this commission had an item before them on how to deal with what has been coined, you know, mango lots and, and potential future use of that. The commission directed the administration to host three community meetings and get feedback from the community to discuss the potential for keeping the, that, those properties completely passive, or a combination of keeping it passive with a, a portion that will also have some affordable housing, which has been, was a long-term initiative through the CRA to try and bring some affordable housing to, to that, to that property. As you know, a portion of that was also named for, for former mayor Dr. Anna Price. So that was still, in any scenario, that would still be the case. Electronically, we also put out a survey. We were asked to put out a survey for members of the community to be able to, to weigh in and vote from that standpoint. In that case, I can report that the 46 had voted to keep it as a park only, and 11 had voted to have a park and affordable housing on the site. So 46 park only and 11. Other voices came to the community meetings and, and people shared their thoughts and views, understanding the need and challenge of fulfilling the housing, affordable housing crisis. And other members of the community just shared that they'd like to see that stay in its current state for the future. So your direction to the administration was to bring that back for you, for you to deliberate, and then give further direction to ourselves and the city attorney on what to bring back, if anything, as it relates to that property.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Colleagues, comments or questions? Where would you like to start? Let me, let me, no, that's fine. Let me give it some-
Is it going to be me?
I'll give you some quick context and then we'll go from there. So if, if you followed this discussion when it really came up about three months ago before this board, we had heard that over the tenure of existence, term, existence of the CRA, that a portion of this property was designated for affordable workforce housing development. This commission at the time, I think, in an effort to kind of advance that plan and be consistent with what we understood to be the expressed preferences of the neighborhood, were kind of marching along that direction. And we decided to hold a series of community conversations about priorities, given that we heard some feedback that, given changes in the neighborhood, we'd be better served in keeping these lots in their current, in their current condition, which is unimproved and has green space. We had already made a decision to designate about 8,000 square feet, which is a portion of the lot closest to north of the Marshall Williamson homestead, as a park in honor of the Reverend Dr. Anna Price, who passed away recently and serves as our city's first African-American mayor. But the other portion was left for feedback from the neighborhood. I think, given what we've heard and given kind of the changed conditions, including the fact that there are large, larger buildings that probably were ever contemplated during the term of the CRA being built adjacent to the site, I'm cer- I'm certainly supportive of keeping the lots unimproved and improving them as a, as a passive park, consistent with the expressed preferences of the neighborhood. But open to hearing one else's feedback and thoughts on the subject. Yes, sir?
Mayor, and I, I forgot, Commissioner Rodriguez had communicated to me if I could share on his behalf-
Please.
That his preference was certainly to be, leave it in its current state.
Okay. Further comments and thoughts, colleagues?
I just have something to float out to you guys.
Yes.
I know that we've had discussions about this in particular in the past and found no real place, for lack of the right word for it. You know, there was a Mrs. Marshall Williamson, and there is nothing in this city that I know of that reflects anything that has to do with her, but without her?
Yeah.
You know? So I think if we're taking that whole area and making that whole park, you know, making that whole thing into a park, I think we need to consider maybe putting her name on it because it was her yard. So either we, you know, put both their names on it, we find something and we put her name on it, but we can't kind of keep kicking the can when it comes to her. And I'm not saying we are, I'm just saying by virtue of not discussing it-
No, I agree.
We left it.
Agree. I think it's a, I think it's a really valid point. And I think one thing we should do immediately, if you're, if you'd like to bring it, is something we do every year to honor and commemorate their memory and obviously their focus on improving the lives of students in that neighborhood and beyond, is I think we should add her name certainly to the scholarship fund. I think that would be one thing we can do without, you know, any really thought or deliberation. I think with respect to the green space, it makes sense as well. We have taken the step to commemorate a portion of it. So we should probably have a broader conversation, get staff's feedback on whether we do something that basically, I have always seen this site as a potential kind of historical campus, where maybe in the future, we can acquire the homestead from the family and kind of keep that little pocket and the home as kind of a, a historical marker for the history of the neighborhood and its evolution. Certainly talked to James about it and been delinquent in getting with him about meeting with the family and kind of setting up a possible gift that way. But I think if that's a, a vision that the, that the commission shares, I think then maybe recasting the park and maybe having a memorial garden in the, in a, in a larger park in honor of the former mayor would be appropriate. So, but I think it needs some more thought before we decide to go in that direction. But I think certainly recognizing her, I would, I would be a fan of, at the very least, changing the name of the scholarship fund to commemorate her right away.
Yeah. And, and I think if, if we do nothing else and don't name any part of this after her or whatever, we maybe want to consider Marshall Williamson Park, which is, you know, across the street.
Naming hers there.
Marshall and, I don't know what her name is, but Mrs. Marshall Williamson Park. Like, notice, I'm sitting up here, I don't know her name. That's a problem, I think, for all of us.
Appreciate the perspective.
Thank you.
Further comments? Yes, sir?
And I think that's a great comment. And obviously, we did end up adding it to the plaque that's on, on there as well. So that's good. But obviously, a broader recognition would be, would be good. And I do think it's great to, to go by the wishes of the community. I do think that, I, I mean, as a passive park, I, I do understand. I, I wouldn't say like not improving it at all.
No, I-
Yeah, certainly some way of activating the park while maintaining it being passive would probably be the best thing for us to do because I think we could further enhance it while keeping it passive.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that, you know, that not, I think revolutionary, but certainly some enhancements, you know, to the park, minor enhancements would be appropriate, including, I'm not sure when the last time those, those firu trees have been, have been pruned or tended to. So we should, we should probably make sure that we invest some money in our budget to, in this coming budget to at least better curate that space.
Yeah, and I think it's a great place for us to really try something where, where all the improvements can be very natural-
Yes.
And passive and really go all out to, to maintain the natural, you know, aesthetic.
For the thoughts, Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I echo your guys' sentiments on that. It's a very difficult lot to do, affordable housing there. We would probably need to figure out a partner, and it's not a very feasible place to do it with the current zoning that we have. If we wanted to increase it, it's still difficult. So I, I agree. It's, it's not, it's not a good point, a good place to, to do affordable housing. It just doesn't fit what we're, what, what we could possibly do there. So I agree with, with all you guys on that.
Okay. So I think, Mr. Manager, the direction's clear. We're just going to keep it as a passive park. And we'll discuss in this budget if we want us to decide a few bucks to begin to make some improvements to. And improvements, we mean, you know, natural improvements to the park. Okay?
With, certainly with moving forward, the resolution that was passed on to Dr. Anna Price, park naming and the portion that was outlining that legislation.
Yes, we, we, I think we want to, I, I think we definitely want to keep, we want to honor her memory at that location. I think that's the most obvious one I can think of. We'll have, we'll have some more discussion, I think individually with you about if we go beyond that.
Understood.
Okay? Okay, I think we'll move on from M2. Any member of the public? I'm happy to open up the floor. Mr. Levi, did you want something?
Good evening, sir. Good afternoon. Levi Kelly, 6250 Southwest 60th Avenue. I understand that the position that, that you guys are pushing this particular project, I don't want to speak on behalf of some of the other people who didn't participate in the survey and didn't have an opportunity in, in what I've been told and as, that they not necessarily for developing there, but they want to know where are they going to be looking to put some affordable housing. I think at the end of the day, what we're looking at is that we need housing. We, we, I mean, again, we, we have a list of about 40 people right now begging to come back to South Miami. They're hollering about the situations down south where, quite frankly, crime is a little bit up, and they want to get their kids back to a more safe environment, which is a credit to our city. And that we need to think hard about what we can do and what we can develop on this city guidance because we get nothing from the county. And, and I'm just being frank with you. That, that lottery system they got, it does, it doesn't provide for us, to be frank. And I just, I want to make sure that, that I'm speaking on their behalf because I know a lot of them are, are going to be disappointed with the fact that it's, it's been deemed to leave it completely undeveloped as passive. I have no problem with that. I'm a retired park ranger, so I can go out and hug the trees too. But the fact that, you know, I, I think we have to set priorities off, so we got people that need to lay their head under some shelter someplace. So I, I think you, you really got to think hard about that. I know in our last CAA meeting, C, I want to say CAA, our last community meeting, the question was, was raised to the point where how many people received the survey? And there was about 30 people in the room, and only two said they received the survey. So I, I don't know. We, we also probably need to look at a better way of delivering information and, and that type of stuff to the community. So I, I think that as we move forward, we, we need to, to look deeper into, to the actions we take there. And we need to start doing a better job of doing a, a research as it relates to the community at large because we, we want to make sure we honor Mr. Williams and his family. But we also want to make sure that the facts are completely correct.
So Levi, I, I, I want to just give the manager an opportunity to explain to the public how we did do the outreach, there's, that's clear. And then I wanted to ask you, just if we can kind of connect, if you do have 40 families, I think one piece of helpful information to us is, do we have any sort of demographic information about the household size and household income?
Okay.
Because as we're trying to fashion opportunities, we want to make sure we're speaking to people who really want to come back-
Okay.
And delivering product that's actually accessible to them. So if we can, if we can, if we can talk offline about that, I'd welcome the opportunity.
Yeah, I, I think Jamie and I had, have that working lesson.
And if not, maybe it's something we can have our staff help you guys-
Okay.
Call out that information. It's, again, for the purpose of understanding where the need is from people who actually want to come back. And we can then, as we see opportunities, begin to kind of structure programs that, you know, help them get in at a price point that we, that they can afford, if that's possible.
One last comment, and then I think we need to follow the lead as young lady over. She came with an idea as to how we could better probably make some, some inroads and, and to reducing the, the type of financial commitments to try to get people back in. So, but we'll, we'll have that discussion later on. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Manager, did you want to add?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I, yeah, Mr. Kelly, you know, brings up a, a very important point that we have discussed as of recent, which is, you know, how do we penetrate our communications for everything that we do beyond sort of social media and things like that? Because of that, during this effort, it was multi-pronged. There was a direct mail that went to all the households that were under, that lived within the former CRA footprint. So there was direct mail and then staff, City of Miami, City of South Miami, excuse me, staff hand-delivered-
Old, old Haste Day hardship.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, I went way back. Delivered a, a door hanger which had QR code that would direct them. So we did a door-to-door door hanger, besides social media as well, obviously, and, and the community outreach meeting. So those additional efforts were put in place because of wanting to ensure that we tried to reach as many households as possible. Obviously, more, more could be done from the standpoint, Mr. Kelly and I have talked about, from an ongoing standpoint, what do we set in place that would continually communicate in those ways with members of our community that may not necessarily, you know, have a social media account or follow things from that standpoint? Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for that clarification. Okay. Let's move on to item M1.
I have someone on-
On Zoom, I'm sorry. Ms. Williams, if you can ame, ameet yourself, you're recognized.
Let me, let me try to ameet her. Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Good evening. I just, you know, welcome back, everybody. Hope some schools back in session and back to the rigmarole. But I just wanted to say, I've been joining a couple of times online. I've been working really late, so I haven't been able to be in person. But I just wanted to, from my behalf and, and my neighbors, we want to thank you guys because I know this is not, has not been an easy thing when you have different parts of communities that are asking for some vastly different things. And I want to thank you for prioritizing what the community that is living there, our current people that are in that immediate area, and then other families who share the same thoughts that we do as South Miami residents. You know, as a resident here, I try to partake in most of the things. I, I still go to Sunset Place, even though I know it's, you know, kind of on the wind down. I attend, you know, things at Dante Facel Park. I go throughout the different things that we have, the art festival. And so as a community member, I'm just very grateful that, you know, our voices are being heard. that, you know, our voices are being heard. I am a person that truly believes in equitability and making sure that everyone has a fair shot, and I think that one thing that maybe for the future is like, like you guys were talking about, is looking into opportunities, not just for that, because there's some other concerns I have regarding some other things in the city that I'd like to talk with you about outside of this, but I'm very grateful to hear that the things that we are looking forward to, especially given the fact that we have these projects that are already done deals. We have the project that's over there with Solomy Park, we have a second version of that, we are going to have some of zoning and upscaling of some other projects in the immediate area, one in the county side, and so given all of that, it's very hard to digest as a person that has to endure that daily, but I also think that it's going to be a pleasure to look and see and be able to still eat that fruit, that's some of the best in Miami Dade County outside of the redlands, and to be able to breathe air and have some kind of calmness in that immediate area to kind of offset some of the other things that are going on that have been beyond our control. So I thank you guys so much for your due diligence and your effort, and I'm truly appreciative, and I know I speak for Angela, who's sick and was not able to make it there this evening. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Madam Clerk, anyone else online?
No.
Okay. With that, we've given the manager direction, let's move on to the presentation on M one or discussion item M one, please.
Mayor, you had asked at the last commission meeting, when it came up, we had mentioned that there was a new law on the books regarding, wait, is M one? Yeah, platting. Yeah. Whether we had the opportunity, now that there was a state directive, to change our subdivision code, our plating code, to enable applicants to get plaques approved administratively, and that's what the state law provides for. However, what they, when they enacted the state law, they left in place a provision that says that any conflicting law from a charter county will take precedence over the statute, and it just so happens that our county, in its infinite wisdom, has a provision that requires the governing body approve a plat. County takes a position that that is in direct conflict with the state law, so the state law would not apply. Either we're going to be the ones approving it, or the county commission's going to be the one approving it. So I would not recommend that we alter our subdivision code.
Agree. Colleagues, any questions? Okay. We'll move on from M one to M four then. I think that's City Attorney again. This is SB 180 and limitations on new regulations.
Okay, so I'll try to narrow, make it as succinct as possible. SB 180 is an emergency, emergency operations, emergency response statute. It does many, many things, all dealing with the hurricane aftermath or any kind of natural emergency. It has one additional provision tucked in at the end on the last day of session, which essentially says that any burdensome regulations, without defining what that means, that are enacted between roughly the summer of 2024 and July 1st of 2027, are, cannot be enforced against an applicant and need to be repealed if the applicant raises them. It's unclear what any of that means. It's unclear how that would be applied towards, let's say, like a mixed ordinance, an ordinance that gives as much as, you know, at the same time as tweaking kind of the, you know, calibrating the law. Some of those calibrations may be more restrictive, more burdensome, so it's unclear what it would do to a law like that. You know, from one reading, it could allow an applicant to cherry pick and get the best of, you know, all the good stuff from a law that they want and to reject anything that restricted them further. So for that reason, there are a number of municipalities that are suing the state, essentially to challenge this law. This law, as I said, it runs, it would run through July 1st of 2027, but it could be, there's a new year for each hurricane that comes through. So that July 1st of 2027 could be extended infinitely if there's a hurricane every year that includes Dade County in its, within the emergency declaration. So that's kind of the long and the short of it, I'm happy to answer any questions, but essentially, this, I wanted to raise this because there are a number of municipalities that are suing the state, and if the city wanted to participate in that, they can, they do not have to. So far, I believe six cities have signed on, I think another-
I'm going to guess that Commissioner Bonich is very enthusiastic about this item.
I understand, and that's fair, but I have to raise, I have to raise the opportunity.
Okay. Colleagues, first, any questions before we open up to comments? No comments yet? Questions? No questions? How many other cities have?
So far, so far, six, and there are another, there are probably double digits that are considering it this week.
Can you list those, the six?
Ah.
If you know them?
I think I have some.
Are there any other in Dade County? Any others in Dade County?
In Dade County? Let's see, let's see who else is on here. Let's see. Weston Edgewater and Deltona, they are not in Dade County. Let's see who else is in here.
You can name them, it's fine. Just curious.
I'm sorry?
If you want to name them, go ahead.
I'm happy, I just don't have, I don't have the entire list here.
Okay.
I just, I'm trying to find the ones that I have. North Bay Village and potentially Miami Springs are considering it within a matter of weeks. I don't know where Kivaske and Pinecrest are at right now.
Okay. Colleagues, comments? Commissioner, one each.
You want me to kick it off?
Go ahead.
Okay. Considering the amount of money and time that we are investing in another lawsuit that we're currently involved in, I think that to pick this up would be foolhardy. It doesn't make any sense, especially because last I checked, we are standing alone on the one that we're in, and this one already has multiple people and more people that want to sign on. So one way or the other, we would benefit if it goes through or if it doesn't, whatever happens, they don't necessarily need us or our money. Our money is already being spent somewhere else to the tune of, you know, five, six times what this is, so.
Okay, further comments?
I echo her comments. I think that it's something that we can hold off on. There should be a lot more municipalities going after it, so we'll just benefit and hold off on it. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think whatever happens, short of an outright invalidation of the law, we're going to be litigating on this ordinance probably on many occasions to come. So I'm happy to wait, so. Seeing that, we'll close the discussion on item four. If you could just keep us apprised of progress, what is the, what's the date by which you anticipate the lawsuit will be filed?
I think in another three to four weeks.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the report. Colleagues, anything else? I think we can jump back to CA one. So Madam Manager, do you have an answer for us?
So some rough numbers, we were paying 2,500 a month, so it was $30,000, the contract that we were paying to the last broker, and she was receiving 20% commission on the gap insurance that the city had. So that was an additional about $37,000 that she was receiving from the carrier, so about $67,000 plus the ancillary services, which I don't have the exact numbers to, but for example, Aflac Dental, et cetera. This year, USI is at about 73 with all the services.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, any further questions on item one? Again, which is a resolution to renew the health insurance coverage with curative insurance company and which results in the payment of a six commission, 6% commission to our broker on the premium. So is there a motion?
I'll move it, Mayor.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Kaye and a second by Vice Mayor Corey. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Kaye?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonich?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Item passes four.
Okay, and thank you for the information. Colleagues, I don't see anything else on the agenda? Am I mistaken?
Commission reports.
Commission reports. Anyone have anything they'd like to share with the body? Okay. Seeing no reports, we stand adjourned. Thank you.[1792.61][1792.61]